All right, you're on.
All right, it is seven oh. Two and on Tuesday, April ninth, I'm gonna call the. Rundle Budget Board and Select Board Meeting into order. Yes, first thing we're gonna do is approve the minutes of March twenty six.
Motion being approved as submitted.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor? All those opposed? And you weren't here, so one absent abstention? All right. Turn it over to Keith, uh, go over the budget review.
Uh, yes, at your, at your last meeting, we had some questions relative to. The. The thoughts of the fires, the fire service about going to. Uh, main, uh, purrs. To be offered a retirement program through them as opposed to the. Uh, four fifty seven B program that we have for most of our employees through Voya. Um, main purrs, uh, the program that would be a special plan for them is a plan three C. Uh, it would, uh, provide them, um, they would have to provide twenty five years of service. To the municipality or and. Uh, there is no age limit to it, so in other words. Um, if they start at twenty five and and they're done, they could theoretically be done by fifty. They would be eligible for their retirement benefit. Uh, for them, it would be paid out at sixty six point six seven percent. Of their, uh, average salary, and from what I understand, they take, there's a formula involved, they take, um. The three best years divided by three and then they they multiply, um. The years of service and then a percentage, there's a percentage there that comes up with a. Um, a total amount and then they. Uh, divide that by twelve and that's what you get for a monthly amount. Uh, I think more important for us at this particular point is not to get into the. The the weeds of it, though we can get into some of it, I've done a little bit of, I've got the handbook and that kind of thing, but. To to really look at what it's good, what it would actually cost the town to offer that program. Right now, uh, based on our, um. Anticipated, uh, full-time salary next year, um. Which would be two hundred and sixty seven thousand, two hundred and seventy seven dollars and ninety two cents. Um, we we currently pay six percent of that if people do it, which would be sixteen thousand thirty six eighty eight. With, uh, um, main purrs. We would have to pay. Thirty four thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and fifty seven cents, which is twelve point eight percent. Which would be an increase. In that retirement benefit of eighteen thousand, one hundred and seventy four dollars and eighty nine cents. Uh, for the town to pay. Then, um, the way the four fifty seven plan is presently set up. Uh, we pay six percent. The employer, employee has has the option to pay up to six percent. In the main purrs. There would be no option for them, they would have to pay into that program. Um, and they would have to pay at a rate of nine point two percent. For their contribution to it, so whatever their salary is. If they want to be a main purrs, they'd have to pay nine point two percent, we'd pay twelve point eight percent. Um, and then they'd be on their way, I think the selling point for them at this point. Um, is the fact that, uh. That it is a common practice within the profession that a lot of folks. Have, um, the three C plan. Uh, and offer that, uh, because. Obviously, it's a, I think the fire service is a young man's game, you get into your. Your sixties or so, I don't think you, you're gonna be running into a lot of fires and. And carrying a lot of hope, so I think that's the reason for it. The other things, I I looked at our program, we have a, we have a four fifty seven B program right now. Um, if you folks thought that. This was a good alternative for the fire service. To move into. It's my opinion by looking at what main purrs offers. That it would not be a good. Fit for the rest of our employees. I see it as a, as a, a straight pension plan, they they establish a certain amount of. Of, uh, contribution on a yearly basis, you're locked into that. Um, then they go ahead and use their formula and then obviously you have to put in. For for the A C program through. Uh, main purrs, you would have to put in twenty five years, you'd also have to be sixty five years of age. Before you withdraw that funding and then it's set on a formula, as I've mentioned before, similar formula that they use. I think theirs is the three years times the years of service times point zero two percent. Gives you a a dollar amount that then they divide by twelve, they send you that. That amount. The four fifty seven program that we have now. Um, folks, if they had to, they could, they can, it it's it's tax deferred. They don't have to pay any taxes on it until it's withdrawn. It it provides an ability to withdraw money if they wanted to, there's a, there's a return, they they could. Say something catastrophic happened in their lives and they needed to draw some money, they could draw their, a portion of their funding out of it. In order to, uh, cover that expense, so there's a lot more flexibility with it, I think. Um, I think if people take the time to look at it, it would be a. Uh, a good program, uh, to stay in, I think the issue that we'd have is. Is if you said to go to main purrs for the fire service. And went to that three C, you're asking, you'd be contributing twelve point eight percent. Where you would only be contributing six percent on the four fifty seven. B plan. I would propose to make an, if you go with a three C. To make an adjustment on the, um. Four fifty seven B plan to additional two percent by the town, which would be a total of eight percent. Now, under four fifty seven B, there is, there, the cap to that is twenty, for this year, for twenty twenty three, it's twenty two thousand. Three hundred dollars, in other words. An employer, an employee and employer combined could put in that total amount if they so desired. The only one that ever gets close to that would would be myself at this point, and I'm at twelve thousand dollars a year. So we're not even close to the threshold, but the four fifty seven plot provides an opportunity for. An employee. To take additional money out of their own pay and put it into their retirement program. Unlike what main purrs would be able to do for those, uh, municipal employees, so. If you decide to move up on the, um, on the fire service, that would be another, as I said, eighteen thousand, one seventy four eighty nine. I would, I would say if you did that, that you, there would. That it would be, uh, beneficial for the town to look at perhaps changing, uh, adding, uh, eight percent. Go up with two percent for the, uh, for the employees as well.
The local communities around us. For their admin staff, for their tax collectors, are they in main purrs?
Some are, yeah.
Some are, yeah, cuz I mean, that's the, that's the draw for the fire station, by the moment, right, is folks that are all.
I think so.
Already, already in it.
Right.
Draw for them to come.
The more I look at our four fifty seven B plan, I think it's a very, it's a, it's a nice plan, it provides. It 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 provides our employees to to assist in their. Uh, the way their money is being, um, invested. Uh, they, uh, we have a Voya representative that comes here on a yearly basis, I know Simone's taking advantage of it. Will sit down and go over your portfolio with you, provide options for you. I think, uh, i- i- it's a benefit, I don't see it as a drawback.
Could we offer main first just of a fire department and then maybe make changes to the, to the four fifty seven for the.
That's what I'm, that would, that would be my proposal.
Right. Pump that up to eight percent and then just do the, just do the fire department.
Correct.
That main purrs.
So if they're doing main purrs, though, they don't take social security, they can't do social security, right?
No, they have to, they have to take social security because we signed up for the social security benefits.
Right, but but as far as they, when they. As opposed to four fifty seven, because you get your social security plus you could withdraw.
That is.
You have, like, at my age, you have, you have to do the minimum of R M D or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh. So most, so most of the folks from the fire department would be coming over, the younger ones, they're already in main purr, so they wouldn't have that social security offset.
Right.
That somebody that's been here, you know, twenty five, thirty years.
We still have to pay social security for them.
Yeah, we still have to pay for that.
Yes, we do.
Double.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, not quite.
We do.
Even for the.
Not quite double, but.
Right.
Right.
But you're paying first and you're paying social security.
It's, uh, what? Well, social security Medicaid is seven point four five percent, so it's six point two, I think.
So I mean, that in itself could be a reason not to copy it for an employee, right?
For for a fire service employee? I think the the attitude in, I I mean, you you probably hear these guys all the time talking about that.
But they probably don't know that we're paying, we're gonna be paying social security for them and there's gonna be an offset when they draw.
Correct, they they probably don't know that.
Right, no. Cuz they're not getting that in another department.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Just like R S twenty one, they don't get, they don't get social security, all you guys.
Right. Right.
Uh, I'm sorry, we do have a question from our. One person in attendance.
Who knows?
I'm sorry, we can't really hear you. Yep.
And I'm sorry, I've had teeth extracted. I was, um. When I moved to Maine, I started working for the Maine Department of Labor. And I worked for them for ten years. And at the time of my hire, it was not explained to me that I would lose. Uh, sixty percent of my social security benefit. And. So I decided to take my. I would turn, when I turned sixty six, my intention was to work until seventy and I didn't, wasn't able to do that. But I took my social security benefit for those two years and at the time that I was taking it. It was both my benefit and my ex-husband's. And I was getting about twelve hundred dollars a month. In social security in addition to my salary. After I retired, my social security dropped to four hundred and sixty eight dollars a month. Because of the windfall protection. So I think part of the conversation that you're having with folks coming into the fire department. That was never explained to me, I didn't realize I was gonna you lose that much of my benefit. And only working for the state, my benefit from the state would have been seven hundred dollars a month. Plus the social security of four hundred and sixty eight, I would have been earning. That's would have been my monthly income, um. And I just. I just, that's why I'm here, I just think it's really important and Henry Ingerson also wrote something in the post last week about. The disability part of main purrs. And how difficult it is to access that. As opposed to being able to get social security disability, if if they're not, they may not be able to get that if they become disabled. I, um, I did retire as disabled and my benefit became quite a bit larger than I expected it to be, so I'm okay, but. If you look at Henry's article. The process of getting disability retirement through main purrs is very, very arduous for some people. And a lot of people, eventually they don't get it and his article was about a a teacher that he worked with, um, who didn't get it. And I just, it's, it's just really important to put that out on the table so you're all aware that, I mean, main purrs for me has been great, but. I think it's, it doesn't have. All of the benefits that people think that it does and some benefits get taken away and that's what I worry about, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, one other thing, I did learn after I retired that if somebody had worked under you, is that? That anybody that has worked under the social security system for thirty years. Can collect their full social security and main purrs, but you're talking about. Possibly recruiting. Young firefighters and having them work and they're not gonna be paying into that, the town may be, but you're not going to be. And I would say for the first. I've been retired now for ten years and for the first. I would say probably seven years, my benefit was four hundred and sixty eight dollars, we finally had a cost of living raise within the last few years. I'm just over five hundred dollars a month now from social security.
So, so what is that, to her point, a new employee comes in. The town's gonna be paying social security, but the employee is not, the employee is gonna be paying into main purrs, correct? So.
So when they, when they look at the, when they look at the social security benefit, they will take that in consideration when they look at it and. That windfall protection will also be. Be looked at, uh, as to what they're getting from their retirement through main purrs if you choose to give it to them.
I hate to even, I hate to even say this, but only fifteen states. In the country. Come under the windfall protection. And the reason I hate to say it is that was Joe Brennan that signed that.
Rest in peace.
Yeah.
Just passed away.
Yeah. What I was gonna ask is like this bitter third or like Saco or this Kennybunk or. The towns that are using purrs, is it exclusively purrs on their fire department?
Yeah.
So they're not doing any social security?
No.
It's exclusively first.
So I, I know I've asked this before, but. Is there any way to go back and say, hey, for any new employees under the fire department? Somehow get away from being social security?
No, you locked into it. It's locked in years ago.
So how does the R S U and and the other fire departments get away with that because they're not locked in?
Yeah, I think there was a choice that was made by this community years ago and. It's on the books and that's the way they're gonna keep it.
State benefits, they're not gonna let that go.
So I, I, you know, I don't know what you wanna do in terms of offering and not offering it, uh. I've developed. I developed the, uh, the the warrant in two separate, separate ways, I. Developed the the first warrant with everything the same as it was before, six percent across the board. Uh, the second warrant that I put together, which I have stashed over here, um, is. I I placed eight percent in. I factored out, um, the amount that we'd have to pay to the fire service and put it in as a separate warrant article. Because we'd have to get approval from the taxpayer to provide it. And the overall budget difference is forty, forty four thousand, four hundred and fifty seven additional dollars, if you add it. If you added two percent. To the four fifty seven for all your other employees. And you offered the main purrs. That's only three employees, all right, cuz. No, I I budgeted the whole, the whole shoot match, I didn't, I didn't try to factor in who would take it, who wouldn't take it. Though your point is well taken.
Yeah.
Yeah, at some point, it may only be just two employees out of fire that take it right now.
Right.
But if we have it on the books, then folks, when they come in, they, they would just automatically get into it.
Question, Keith, do you know what, um, contribution some of the other local towns do for their retirement plans or? Cuz I was gonna say, I know when I first started, I think we were like at four percent or five percent or whatever and then. When John was here, John Frazier, we did go up to six percent, but that's been a long time since we've had any. Increases as far as the contribution from the town, uh. But I.
Yeah, I.
You know what?
I didn't look at other communities, I do know that the six percent, I've been here since twenty fifteen and it's been six percent.
Right, and it's been, I think, since. John Frazier because.
Yes.
Yeah, since I've been on the board, we have been changing it up.
I think it started at four percent or five. And cuz I, when I first started, it wasn't here.
Right.
And then you got it going. And then it was a lower percentage and that you matched. You could put more, but you can't, the town matched to like four or five percent.
Correct, the the four fifty seven, the way it's set up now, you, you, in twenty twenty three, it goes up every year. Um, back in, I was looking to paperwork today, in twenty fourteen, it was seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars total. Now it's twenty two thousand, three hundred dollars total, so it's, and it will be adjusted again in twenty twenty four.
And you gotta come in.
No, I just wanted to say thank you so much for allowing me to speak, I really appreciate it, I I feel very passionate about it. Thank you, we appreciate your comment.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, but I do have a question. And this is for the fire department. Is, is the retirement, the fact that they can retire after twenty years with main purrs, is that? The benefit they're looking at? I mean, being a fireman is a very, it it's a job where you're either sitting here doing nothing or you're. Doing something life threatening, so i- is that their main? Benefit that they're concerned with is the fact that once they've been in that for twenty years, they can retire?
I think it's, I think it's, uh, I think it's just. Beer pressure. Or I think it's just everybody else has got it.
Yeah.
Or being able to carry over retirement.
Oh, man, we got main purrs, hey, what do you got? And I think it's just, I think it's that the kind of situation that's going along and.
The contribution part looks good because you're doing twelve percent as opposed, but again.
Right, but their, their jumps up to, they jump up to nine point two, two, nine point two percent. So they gotta take money out of their own pocket.
Right. Yeah.
So, uh, you know, when that's, when that's sort of explained to them, I'm not quite sure if they'll all get on board.
And you said that they can't. With main purrs, they can't. Start taking any of that money until they turn sixty five?
No, not, uh, under the three C program. One, once they've, once they've got twenty five years of service, they can stop withdrawing their money, so. Uh, if they started at twenty. And they got done at forty five, they can withdraw, start withdrawing their main purrs pension. So there's, there's no limit, uh, there, there's no age limit for them, there's an age limit on the other one at sixty five.
It just messes up if you're able to, if you put in with social security. They discount your social security. For your main purrs. So like, like Priscilla said, she was getting twelve hundred dollars and it went down to four hundred dollars because she started. Getting her main purrs.
Does it have to be up to speed on disability? Um, I don't know if anybody read the article, Henry wrote in the forum. Some, some guy went out on disability. And he had eight years of struggling. Financially and other ways. Before he was allowed to collect disability. Eight years.
It's, I can tell you. It's, it's a real struggle, I I know somebody very close to me that went through this and it was a hell of a struggle for him. To try to get disability for main purrs with the help of Henry, with the help of a couple of the folks that you were finally able to get it. It, it was a struggle.
Uh, I have another question, with your retirement account that we have here in the town hall, can you borrow against that? I know you could without this, we could borrow against it, can you borrow against main purrs?
No, you cannot.
Okay. Because I know of someone who had, they had a major problem and they ended up borrowing against their four one K. And before they retired, they had paid it all back. I mean, you're, you're borrowing it at. I don't even know if there's an interest rate.
There is, there are, but you know, you benefit, but you pay yourself.
Yeah. Plus taxes, yeah.
We could get to come in, sit down with fire department personnel and explain the ins and outs of all, that's what it involves in terms of.
I'm sure, I'm sure you can.
Does main municipal have anybody that does anything like that?
No, you would have to get somebody from, uh, main, uh, main purrs to come in and explain the program to them. There is a.
Problem I would have with getting main purrs, there's gonna be something.
They're gonna be, so, yeah. New bold programs.
They have a handbook. I mean, if you wanna read the handbook, it pretty much tells you. Everything you need to know about the way they do business at this point.
Well, I think, I mean, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, but what John is saying, like, the comparison between, like. What their options are.
Yeah.
Not just main purrs or, you know, like, it's. Laying it out so that it's like what we're talking about here, so that they understand.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Is there an option or an opportunity for that?
Could, could we? Offer them both and let the employee take the choice? Whether they wanna do the four twenty five with the, or the main purrs?
Cuz then, you know, at that point, we could, you could lay it out to the employee and say, listen, if you take main purrs, you know that you's. There's a social security, um, think, I think what happens is that if you offer it and you have one employee that takes it. In the fire service. All new employees are required to take it. I don't think there's any option after that. That's the way it was, has been explained to me in numerous times, so. Once you're in, once the department's in.
Won't, once you open that Pandora's box.
It was, it was, I I think when it was first developed, I think it was something that. I think that people looked at, at least they knew they were gonna have a pension, I think, I think it's when pensions or having pension programs were. Were pretty important things for a lot of people and they, particularly manufacturing and. I know that my. My grandparents worked in the shoe, shoe factory and, um, I mean, it was important to have a pension at the end of the, plus their social security itself.
And a lot of mills lost their pensions.
Yeah. Yeah, they did, didn't they? So I, I, really, it's up to you about the dollar, whether or not you wanna do it, I think the other questions are important questions to be asked. But I think at the end of the day, for you folks, it's a, it's a financial commitment, you wanna make that type of. Change. They're, they're, they're saying they want. You can make a decision whether or not you think they. They should get it.
Are, are they finding it hard to hire because of that?
I don't think so, yeah, but. Andy's point of view in this is, Andy's approaching his twenty five years of benefit. He's still young, he still wants to do the fire service, he's, and there's a group of them that are like that, you know, they got in early and they're gonna get out early. So they wanna go to a department that has way less call volume than what they're currently running and still offers the. You know, same. And, and unfortunately, a town like a Rundle is the perfect scenario for that.
Right.
But.
But they need to understand that there's, because of the social security, there's a drawback to it now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, they're, they're just, but they don't look at.
Right, but the town is still gonna be paying social security and when it comes time to draw.
You know, to, to, to add on to that argument, you could say, if they, if they come here, okay, yeah, you've already met, you've, you've. Met your qualifications for main purrs. Now, if you stay with us for, I think it's ten years, you get vested. In a four fifty seven B program.
Right.
And you'd have that retirement as well, right?
No.
And they don't look at it that way.
They don't, they don't.
I, yeah, I.
They're like now, like this moment, this month, this day, there, there's not.
Yeah, they don't, firemen live way beyond their means. They honestly do.
Humans, not just, yeah, work, yeah.
I, I think that, I don't know if the town, I mean, my two cents, I don't know if the town is ready for it, but. If we look at this from a dollars and cents standpoint, maybe we need to look at this like. Eventually, the town is gonna have to go this route, eventually, the fire, Rundle Fire Department's gonna be a career department. There's gonna be eight, twelve guys up there at some point. And maybe, I I don't know if we. If we look at this as like a buy-in. Now, and then it's like a more of a stepping stone versus. We get to that point where there is eight guys up there and then all of a sudden, that year, it's gonna be. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the town to jump into main purrs.
How do you step into that?
Well, right now, we'd step into it with. With four, or two employees that are taking. I, I, I budgeted the four. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
So then, like, if Reynolds left and a young guy jumped in, now we're at three people and then.
Yeah, you, you've just been stepping in based on the people that we have now.
Right, so then, like, let's say five years from now, we add four more guys, so now there's eight career people up there. You know.
All getting main purrs.
So I don't know if we should need to.
So I don't know if we should need to look at this from that, like that scenario financially, like would it benefit the town incrementally increasing the main purrs pay in? Or if we just wait and.
Find it all at one time.
I don't know, I, you know, I don't know what, what's a discussion need.
So from a, from an employee's standpoint, I guess it, it all depends on how many years they've had in main currents, right? So if somebody was to have X amount of years in main purse, we don't go to main. Then they come here and now it's social security that's involved, right? So again, there's an offset. So if an employee comes here that has main purrs, we also have main purrs. Social security is still involved, but it's a much lesser amount because it's only what the town has put in.
Correct.
So that, that.
But if they continue.
At the end is a lot less.
If they continue to, like, let's say they just mentally like said, you know what, I'm gonna continue to pay into my main purse, but we don't offer it. But they set up a four fifty seven and continued to put six percent while they were working in a run. I mean, to Keith's point, you know, they're gonna get out with a retirement from, or pension from purrs.
Especially if we go to eight, let's say we.
Plus, right.
Plus their four oh one K.
And I, I think the other thing it does is that I, I know we've had a couple of people that have, that have approached a Rundle in the past to, to say, boy, I'd love to come to Rundle, but you don't offer main purse, so I can't take the, take the, the risk of losing my pension. You know who I'm talking to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, because basically if they turned around and, and like worked nineteen years under purrs and then come here and get under social security. And so they're so, they're, they're, they won't be able to draw on purrs, right? They.
Yeah, they'd be able to draw on.
They would still be able to.
As long as they, it would be a deduction because of the social security.
Correct, and it would be a deduction because I don't think they get the twenty five years either.
Right.
I think that would be another.
Oh, right. They didn't quite make their twenty five years retirement. I'm wondering how that would.
Yeah.
How they would make out with social security and purrs as far as the offset.
So, well, the deduction is not from main purse, right? The deduction be, could be from what they get from social security. Their social security would be reduced, their main purse would stay.
Correct.
Whatever.
Not, not an issue. Five years, nothing.
Correct.
The formula that.
Right.
Less than.
Right, right, right.
Say they get to twenty five years, say they're making, say they're making sixty five thousand dollars a year for the last three years, they would be at probably twenty four hundred bucks a, uh, a, a month that they would getting, I think. Plus there'd be a reduction in their social security benefit as a result of their pension. So they'd get a smaller amount there.
And those guys come into a Rundle, purrs is based on their best three years. So a Rundle's not gonna benefit them at all from a main purse name. They're not gonna get.
Correct, they're probably gonna get their best three years where, where they just left from.
Yeah. They literally are coming here because a Rundle offers main purrs, they can basically slide to a Rundle and they're gonna kick back. That's, that's the driving force. I hate to say it, but that's, that's it.
But these aren't new people. These are people that have already worked.
Oh, these are guys that have done like twenty two years in a career department. They want three more years on Easy Street.
Yeah.
That offers main purrs to get their twenty five years.
Yeah.
Coming to a Rundle and.
But is that the type of employee we want? I mean, we want employees just to come in here for three years. You know, three, four years.
I mean, these guys are good guys.
Yeah, I'm sure of that, but it's just.
Yeah, it'd be loved, it'd be great to have the experience.
Well, season wise, well, well seasoned guys, but it's Rundle's, we do seven hundred and fifty calls a year compared to Bedderford that does forty five hundred, you know?
Seven hundred and fifty all the month.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Although I think we should stick with the four, well, since I was under a four oh one K, so I haven't heard anything going about main purse. Sorry.
Oh, it's not, I don't, I'm not part of it at all.
Yeah.
Nope.
And if you can't, if it's a choice of, once we offer it, then you can't stop. You have to offer it to, to every new person.
Correct.
Has to go into main purrs. They can't say, have a choice and say, no, I want my four oh one K, you know, because I get better benefits with my four oh one K.
Right. They, they would have to take main purrs and then we could offer them. Uh, they could also pay a four fifty seven, but we would, we would provide match it to it, but they could, they could deposit up to twenty two thousand dollars a year if they wanted to.
Right, because nine percent into main purrs and then more percentage into.
Because it's not, it, it.
No, we would have them.
The four fifty seven?
No, no, but they, main purrs, they have to pay nine percent out of their pay for main purrs. Then if they were to get, also get into the four twenties, four fifty seven, and it's more percentage out of their pay that they gotta.
Plus social security.
Plus social security.
And they wouldn't.
Right.
After, right?
No, it's not if they're.
No, if they're purrs, they don't get social security taken out, but we have to continue to pay for security on the, on the position.
Like I said, this town eventually is gonna have to do it. It's, it's inevitable. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, uh, I think we, didn't we lose two people because we didn't have main purrs or did they leave for another reason?
No, that, they left for money. I mean, it wasn't a retirement thing. It was.
It was more money.
The department north, in northern Maine that was offering beaucoup bucks for.
Okay. So it was more about the money that they could have the hands on now as opposed to.
Oh, yeah, no, Michelle hit it on the head. These guys are all.
Okay.
The end of the week, what's my paycheck? Not, what's the end of my career? What's my paycheck? It's.
Yeah.
The end of this week, how much money am I making?
What did I make?
Yeah.
I see it every day.
I bet you do. So what's your, what's your pleasure?
It's no pleasure.
Yeah. No, no, when.
Tough decision.
But I still, I think, I do think that we should raise our percentage for our employees for our, for the four oh one Ks and they've been, it's been the same percentage all these years, so.
You could do like a seven percent or.
Yeah.
It's like, it's hard staffing, it's always hard, you know?
It is, but a Rundle, I think you're gonna see a Rundle be at the, the staff level we are from a fire department standpoint for five, if not ten more years. Like, there's no need to increase the volume people. We don't have the volume goals, no, it's.
Couple of buildings, building houses and all of a sudden.
Same thing, yeah.
A lot of buildings. Thank you.
Ruining down.
No water, let her down.
No, it's not the house, it's the ambulance calls that.
The accidents, it's the traffic, the.
Future aid and stuff. I'm sure there's no reciprocity with future aid as far as, you know, getting a little bit of income from that.
Yeah.
Is, is there a lot of calls, Jason, at, um, one of the colleges?
No, I've been there twice since they opened, personally, me personally. They, they don't go there a lot. But for one, there's nobody there from.
Yeah.
You know, four, five months every year.
Yeah. Well, it's an older population. On the ball.
Not really.
Yeah, there's a lot of kids on there.
Yeah, there's not, it's not really. We do a lot of work up there and we do a lot of work with people that are not older.
I know kids.
Especially in the summertime, you'll have, you'll have, maybe the grandparents have the place and, and they, they're staying in Farah and giving it to their, their kids with grandkids up there because they've got all the amenities and things for kids.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of, yeah. Younger couples with like young kids or, you know, middle aged kids or even like, you know, people that are in like pre-retirement kind of age, like there, it's not all, all older people that are retired.
Well, first of all, I think our retirement should go from six percent at least to seven percent.
You're talking town match.
Town, for the town, yes. Yes, that should go up. Our employees.
What do other towns do for that?
I don't know.
I didn't look, I could go on the MMA website, look at salary survey, they'll, they'll provide data there as to what other communities are doing in terms of.
Someone's main purrs?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know Wells is six percent. That's, they don't do any more than six. I don't think a Rundle's ready for purrs personally, but that's my two cents. I think it's gonna be a hard sell to the town.
Yeah, I'm with you. That's my two cents.
But wait, it's coming, the Rundle is gonna need it.
Well, I think we need to try to, uh, take some action on it by these collective boards as to whether or not you want to offer main purrs in this budget cycle.
Um, well, nobody's had anything good to say about moving main purrs. The only good thing that I see is being able to draw from, from the, the local communities that offer it and the folks that wanna be here for the next three, four, or five years, right? I think that, to me, that's the only good thing, being able to draw people. Being able to hire, we've been able to keep a full staff there, right?
Yeah, we're full now, so.
If we have, we hire someone who's on main purrs and we have a four oh whatever we have. When they come to work for us, they can, they can then take the four oh three C or whatever it is we have.
Four fifty seven.
Four fifty seven, they could.
Yes.
Leave their main purrs alone.
Don't touch it.
Don't touch it, okay.
Until they meet their, um, yeah, twenty five years or sixty five years.
And then they're still gonna, and then they're still gonna use their best, the highest three years.
Correct. Plus the years of service.
Yeah.
So, say they come here and they've got twenty two years in, but they're not sixty five yet. So they're not drawing it. Then they turn sixty five and they only added up to twenty two years. So they'll take their three best times twenty five, twenty two years.
Yeah.
Times that point zero two percent.
It'll be the three best while they were in main purrs.
Yeah, but then, then they'd still have their retirement account.
They'd still have the four fifty seven B from us if we so desired to, yeah.
And they wouldn't be able to, somebody at twenty two years wouldn't be able to draw from main purrs until they're sixty five, correct?
Um, unless the town has a different, there's all different programs, like came up, went to twenty years.
Yeah, they, they don't even offer the twenty anymore.
But if, if we're not in main purrs, if we're not in main purrs, an employee comes over that has twenty two years of main purrs.
He's got that banked.
He's got that banked.
Yeah.
That doesn't change, that twenty two years doesn't change. He can't draw from it till he turns sixty five or whatever that age is, right?
Yeah, he, I, whatever the age may be at that point, the, the three C doesn't, it doesn't have any age limit. So technically, I think, you know, once he gets, I don't know how they would evaluate the twenty five years of service at that point. Um, because there's no, it says twenty five years or, um, yeah, what's it say? Jesus, you got me thinking about it. There's no age requirements. You, you gotta have twenty five years of service, but I'm sure that, one, if you're at twenty two years, I don't know if you're able to buy, to only draw the money that you put in and main purrs keeps the other amount.
I think, I think that's something we need to know, right? Cause if somebody comes in with.
That's their choice.
That's right. That, with all due respect, I don't think we need to worry about that.
Their choice if they have three years left and they decide to move. There's a reason that they are leaving.
I don't think we need to worry about that, Dan. You know, um.
You don't cushion it for somebody.
Either, either offer it or you don't offer it. Uh, Jason has said, you know, he doesn't think we're ready. I think, uh, John has put out a, a, a motion, I didn't hear a second, said not to offer it right now, so.
I did most, you didn't make a, I, I didn't actually make a.
I don't think he, I, yeah, I think it was a soft motion. I don't think he really wanted to be the one that has his name attached to it, you know?
Just wants to move it along.
I'm gonna put it bold in the minutes.
But if you make that soft motion, I'll second that. Make it a hard motion.
So Keith, currently we have four employees at the town. Fire department that are eligible.
Yes.
One, I know for a fact, won't take it.
I've heard that two won't take it.
Two won't, yes. The second one, our newest hire will not take it.
Okay.
Cause he's, uh, he's a military guy and it didn't benefit him at all. One is an out of state resident, it's not even a main resident, right?
Oh, yeah, one's from Massachusetts right now.
So that leaves one employee at the town that's actually eligible for main purse.
Yeah, do you have to be a resident in order to apply for main purse?
It's main purse. Wouldn't you think that would be what it?
Well, the municipality is main. And I think it's related to that.
Wow, really?
I, I don't think you have to be a resident in order to be, to be on main.
So I guess there is two then.
Yeah, there possibly, potentially.
If it's anything that has to do with main, you know, like regular, if you're not a main resident, but you work in main, main grabs your money.
Yeah.
But when you, when you start looking at, when they, when they hear that they gotta pay nine point nine percent of their annual salary to it, as, as a quote, it, nine point two, and they're locked into that.
Yeah.
If they take main purrs, they're locked into nine point two percent. There's no way of getting out of it. Where the four fifty seven program, they can put in, you know, like in my case, I know the town puts in six, I match it at six, but I could put twelve in, twelve percent if I want.
Or you can choose to put two percent.
Correct, whatever I choose, or zero.
Yeah, right, right. And just let the town.
So there's options there, particularly, you know.
If you're tight, yeah.
Right, and then those options would not be available to you if you take main purrs.
Well, I think we ought to take Jason's word for the fact that the town wasn't ready for it, yeah. Don't see putting in a whole program, but one of two people.
I, I agree, but I, I also just, I want everybody to realize that further on down the road, I think this town is gonna be.
Yeah, but that, I mean, it's something we could look at every year, you know, on our deck, changes, you know, the year. And always look at it, yeah.
And I think.
Once we go for it.
You're locked.
Right, we're good.
And I think that because we've been able to keep a full staff, it's not an issue where people aren't coming here because of it, so we've been able to staff the fire station. I think that's a piece of it also.
And make the chief aware that, you know, this can come up another budget year if, if there's a need, you know, but.
Uh, it's in the form of a motion, John?
Yeah, I move what we just talked about.
And I seconded his motion.
So I'm gonna table.
But we do not.
We're gonna table main purrs for this budget cycle.
We have a board on it, yeah.
Well, I've got a motion to second. I want to just make sure I get it down.
That's a very nice one.
I don't think it's something that's gonna go away. And I, you know, I, and, and perhaps we should just get some more information. And to John's point, maybe it'd be beneficial for for you folks to hear what that offer is or, and or at least let the fire service, um, have somebody come down and talk about it as well, so. You're not shutting the door, but to Jason's point, I think it's gonna be something that may come back to, to give us a, a later date. So we got a motion to second to table, uh, any further action on main purrs in this budget cycle.
All those in favor? And does it look like anyone's gonna oppose that one?
Okay. So what do you want to do with the, uh, four fifty seven program? Do you want it, do you wanna bump it? Do you wanna leave it? Now that you've not done anything there. I mean, the only reason I was offering, the only reason I put two percent in there, cause uh, my thought was if you're going to make that move, then I didn't want to have such a disparity, uh, between employees that it, it became a real issue, so. Um, that's why I.
But it might also make this a lot more favorable to any firemen that are new ones that we hire, if we're, if, if we're gonna do the eight percent. Uh, and then they can contribute. That eight percent is a lot less than.
I like, I'm voting seven percent.
Yeah, okay, I'll make it a motion that we go up to seven percent.
But just to say devil's advocate.
Yeah.
You said Wells is six?
Yeah.
Do we know about anybody else? Like, are we just making a hit back decision that like we should go up and go up?
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm thinking is if the other towns offer the same thing, we did do a pretty good salary raise, you know, or, you know, adjustment.
I don't, I don't think I'm inclined.
That I, I think we might.
Without knowing what other towns are doing, just to do it, just to do it. I mean, you can make the motion.
About that?
Nope. Nobody's pounding it. We talked about, I, I told them that, you know, I talked to the employees about uh, the possibility that we would be offering main purrs, some of them were agreeable to it. We've had, we have one employee that, that had it while she was in acting, so thought it was a great deal. Uh, so and so forth, but not many people that are pounding that, saying we gotta do something about it.
So, even if we stay at six percent, um, you gotta recognize that that is six percent of the highest salary, which is kind of a built in raise on the, we, I think for the last couple of years, we've had a pretty good.
Right.
Yeah, if you stay at. Yeah, if you stay at, you stay at six, there, there's still nothing that prohibits an employee to put more money.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
There's nothing there, I mean.
Match or like.
Right, the six percent is, is ours.
I know our deputy treasurer who just left us, she was putting in seven hundred dollars every two weeks into her. Four fifty seven B plan above what she was getting now, so. Um.
Well, then I'll rescind my motion.
Okay.
What's the corrected numbers key? What's your, what's the, you might be getting that, but.
Well.
What's the bottom tack? We, we were like questionable last week or two weeks ago.
Well, if, if we're not gonna do anything with main state retirement or, or four fifty seven, the, the, the sheet that I have in front of you for. Um, for the warrant, yeah, the warrant and the, um, and the spreadsheet. Where's the budget sheet are pretty much identical from the previous year, the previous meeting, the only thing I did change. Was I added the fifty thousand dollars to the lease agreement as Simone had pointed out that we had left it off, so. Once you add that in. Um, I'm at. I'm at five, five million, eight, eight, two, seven, fifty for the entire municipal budget. With a, uh, revenue projection, uh, without any fund balance used at two million, eight, two, nine, nine, five, two. Which, once you do the math and do the adjusted draft, um, of three point five percent. Gets us at no ba, fund balance used at seventeen seventy. At three hundred thousand dollars, it gets us to seventeen twenty. And at three hundred seventy five thousand dollars of fund balance, it gets you to seventeen fifty.
And we're seventeen ten now?
Seventeen.
We're seventeen E. And what's five hundred thousand, like we did last year?
Oh, five hundred thousand would probably, I could do the, I could go and run a number on it, five hundred thousand would probably get you below seventeen dollars.
I think there's a major flaw in Keith's figures, which I have had emails, faxed and fought with him in the last week. The flaw is that if you look at the overall budget sheet, we have two items, each a hundred thousand dollars. And neither item is included in expenses for next year. Now, how we can include, how we can put a hundred thousand dollars in this budget twice. Which is gonna be spent next year and not included in expenses. Backwards, we, we've gone back and forth.
Yeah, I, I can.
The last week.
Sure, I can sort of explain it to you.
Which, which two items are we talking about?
We, you're talking about the, uh, money for the real estate update and the money for the five fifty truck.
Okay.
How many have the capital, which the money for the, uh.
Gotcha. I didn't even look at the right.
So those are, those are two hundred thousand dollar items that were recommended at the money come from fund balance.
So it's maybe five hundred thousand.
So, well, not necessarily, what I'm doing is I, I've taken, we had, I think we, um, last unaudited amount, we got over five million dollars in. Fund balance. So my proposal was to have a warrant article to put five hundred thousand aside. In the event that you wanna use it to set the tax rate, when the time comes in August, use two hundred thousand dollars of fund balance. For the per, for the real estate, um, update and the purchase of that five fifty truck. Now, the argument that I'm having with John is that he thinks it's an expense that needs to be shown on the balance sheet. I don't necessarily disagree with that, but if you're gonna show it as an expense, you have to show that money as a revenue.
Yeah.
And what I've done, i- it, it's a revenue, John, you've gotta, you, where are you gonna get the money from?
Gonna get the money from a fund transfer.
Right, that's what we, and that's what we're doing with the warrant article that asked for us to use the fund balance to pay for those expenses.
When you do not include these items in the expenses. You skew the calculation on the mill rate. And you artificially reduce the mill rate. Uh, in this case, by something on the order of twenty five and thirty cents. The way this should be done is instead of pulling this out as a separate line. These two items ought to go into the appropriate budget for that department. Uh, the one for the property tax reassessment ought to go into the tax assessors budget. The one for the truck repair ought to go into the public works department. Then those expenses get include, included in the total expenses that we're looking at for next year. This has nothing to do with the revenue coming in to pay for them.
But how do you count, but how do you count, uh, stake in fund balance to pay for that?
Same way we've done it every year, once we've got a handle on what the mill rate is without a fund balance. You can then take a look at it and say, how much do we want to lower the tax rate? And at that point, you do a transfer of funds.
So, but that way.
We'd have to set it up to seven hundred, actually, we're gonna be taking out seven hundred and fifty somewhat, I think we're gonna do fifty five, whatever that is.
Right.
And, and you would have an extra two hundred thousand dollars in that fund balance to transfer. But doing it this way, you get an accurate, uh, calculation on the fund balance. Like I said, it's gonna be about twenty five cents or thirty cents higher than what the bigger chief is showing. And it's all on the upper, this business pulling stuff out and saying, oh, we're just gonna pay for it out of fund balance. It's not on, it's, it's gonna catch up with.
So I.
You know, this guy.
See, I disagree with you, John, uh, because, because the, the fund balance is taxes that have already been collected. And the only way we get to be able to spend them is with town meeting approval. So we will have a warrant article that will say, and see if the town, uh, will allow the voters, allow the town to, to spend a hundred thousand dollars out of fund balance. To purchase this item. So it's not money that we, I look at it as, what do we need, what are we asking the taxpayer to collect for taxes? We're not asking them to collect this money, we're just asking permission to use money that's already been collected and spend it for a purpose. And that's why it doesn't show on my balance sheet.
The logic is all along.
No, it cut, it, the, the warrant gets approved every year, and the warrant is what we go by. So, once this gets approved, then we take those numbers and then we decide what our expense is. And then we set our tax rate accordingly.
This is a slight of a hand resulting in the mill rate being seven. Way too long, and I'm sorry, Keith, but it is.
But, but aren't we doing the same thing, like, we're gonna have this special town meeting to do those, uh, comp factor? And we're taking that out of fund balance?
Correct.
So basically, we're just asking for approval for the town to use money that we have in our savings account.
When we did that, that was not part of the budget for the upcoming year.
Right.
That was a crisis situation where we needed to expend funds. You know, to, to take care of a crisis, we're supposed to be doing a budget here. We're supposed to get a handle on what our revenues are and what our expenses are. Now, anybody can look me in the eye and say, two hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna spend next year is not an expense.
It is, but we have, we have money in the bank to pay for it.
So what? This is not about how we pay for it, this is about calculating the mill rate.
So coming, it's at two hundred thousand dollars to the income source.
Yeah, because we don't have an extra two thousand.
We will, but if the voters. Prove those aboard, and I, I, they do that, I want them to know what the money's going for, and leave it to the select.
They would know what the money is going for, if these items were in the appropriate department budget.
I don't, whether they are or not, say, it's in and out, right? We're gonna spend a hundred, we gotta.
If, if they're in the appropriate department, we just can't pull fund balance out and pay for it, we gotta get voter approval to do that. We just can't pull it out and pay for it.
You're right, nobody's asking you to do that, Dan, if you know what your mill rate is gonna be, and then you wanna reduce that mill rate. You make a transfer, fund balance transfer, we've got it every year of the last, um, few years, so, longer I've been on this.
After, after approval by a town meeting.
Right, yeah, after approval by a town meeting.
Right, that's, that's.
That is the legitimate way to do it, only this way where we start picking the individual items out and saying, oh, we'll pay this out of fund balance.
But if, but if we don't get the money, we don't spend the money. If we don't get approval for the hundred K, we don't spend it, cause we don't have it.
If you don't get approval on the warrant article, no, you don't spend it.
And then it's not an expense.
If we don't spend it, it's not an expense.
So then.
But.
Wouldn't have to go anywhere in anybody's budget, could get it all the time, come on.
I, I think.
Come on.
I think you're. I, I, I don't either, I think you're looking at it as a, a bookkeeping, and, um, I think. I, I think, you know, where, where people don't realize that, you know, like, when we budgeted for, um, revenues. That we under budgeted, so when the revenues come in more, we wind up putting this into like a savings, this is our savings account. And I don't think the people realize that, you know, how much gets put into the savings every year, and then you're asking now, okay. We have, this is our budget, our working budget, but meanwhile, we have these additional expenses that are coming up. And we're asking you not to budget for it for during the year, but we're asking you to, so can we take this out of the savings? So that we don't have to raise more taxes to do it, is the way I'm looking at it.
That's how I, yeah.
So, it's like, asking permission to use the savings account that we've over, you know, and people will say, well, why did you bill it higher? Because you never know what your expenditures are gonna come in at, or, I mean, your revenues are gonna come in at, so you underestimate. But when they came in higher, that was went into a savings, and we can't spend that savings unless we have authorization.
And get that authorization, when we approve the town meeting, when we put in one transfer.
Yeah, I don't think.
So are you, are you suggesting that instead of the five hundred thousand that we have in there now, that the warrant article says seven hundred thousand? So that we can cover maybe the two hundred thousand?
Is that two hundred thousand because that, number one, gives you the money to cover the two hundred thousand dollar expense. And it also gives you a correct calculation of what the mill rate should be for the upcoming year.
Not sure how that.
Is that a double, it's, it's double. You're double tipping on that.
The, the warrant articles say this, so the town vote to expend the sum of a hundred thousand dollars from municipal fund balance. To perform an updated real estate property values inquiry. So what we're asking the voters to do is not to raise a hundred thousand, but provide us permission to take a hundred thousand from our savings. And pay it for that purpose only, if we don't get the money, can't do the project.
So we're not raising and appropriating, we're just, we're just.
That's why I didn't calculate it in, John, that's why I don't.
They don't have to raise funds.
No, yeah.
Already raised, right?
The funds are already raised, yes, this is nothing about raising.
No, no, it's about.
This is about, we are supposed to be coming up with a budget for next year. Budget for next year includes the revenues that we expect to take in and the expenses that we have to pay. We subtract the revenues from the expenses and we get a bigger X number of dollars. But we then have to raise one way or the other, by taxes or by fund transfer. Once you start pulling these items out, say, we're gonna pay on how we're feeling. Current funds that we have on hand, actually, I don't really object very much to that. But you've gotta keep these items in the list of expenses for next year. You don't, you're not gonna get an accurate calculation of what the mill rate should.
John, if we list it as an expense, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be the same as saying we're gonna put the two hundred thousand dollars back in savings? Cause we've already raised the money.
We've raised the money.
So we're gonna take it out.
The money right now is in the savings.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have another two hundred thousand dollars.
No, but we will if we raise the mill rate thirty cents, we're gonna co, we're gonna compensate for the two hundred thousand, right?
We will, it will increase the mill rate, it could increase the revenue for next year. But, the way this ought to be done is take the money out of savings with a fund balance transfer. Which will offset the increase of the mill.
Why not those tomorrow?
Yeah. Because they take two hundred thousand dollars out of the expenses, okay? So when you're calculating the mill rate, you're missing two.
I, I get, I get where you're coming from, I'm pretty sure I understand where you're getting, coming from, but the bottom line. Should be the exact same thing, the mill rate should be, no matter how you do it this way, the mill rate should be the exact same thing. To me, that's not, if you're different in your mill rate, something else is going on, because it's, it's the exact same thing.
There isn't anything else going on, this is the difference in the building, I've been over these goddamn savings lines a lot of times, yes. And these are the only two items that, that wind up shooting.
But we're gonna pay for those items out of our savings, so we're gonna take our savings and we're gonna pay for those items. So that knocks that mill rate down by two hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have to raise it.
No, yeah.
No, no, but, but the mill rate that he's got now, if we, cause he's including these.
Correct.
If we now pay for those, now what we have to raise, these two hundred thousand dollars plus, so the mill rate should be what your mill rate is.
Correct, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand, I, you know, I'm just trying to understand when.
Have, what other years has this occurred where we're like, already have things like.
I don't know, I have to look back at the town meeting warrants, I think we've done it in the past, we've used fund balance to.
So we already have predicted for like a certain thing that we needed it for, right? And there's a warrant article in the, well, we have, right? Right, no, no, I get it, yeah, right.
Can I, hey, can I ask a stupid question? What if Terry came to us next selectman meeting and said, I need that truck five fifty on the next town meeting?
You mean, uh, we need it now?
We need it now, what's the difference between what we're doing now and if. It would be the same thing, right?
Right, we would, the only time we get to spend any money out of budget would be.
We'd have a special town meeting, and we'd both spend the hundred thousand dollars, which we already have.
We'd have to take it from fund balance because we can't, we can't raise the, raise any more taxes.
You consider that budgeting?
No, but we didn't budget for it this year, but we're still gonna spend the money, cause it's there, right?
But that is not the intent of a budget, the intent of a budget is to account for your revenues and your expenses for the upcoming year. And instead of that, we're going to this system where we just wanna pull money out of the general fund. It's not the proper way this should be done.
Well, I, I, I have a question, if we added that two hundred thousand dollars back into. Our budget. And then the bottom line, when we get ready to reduce the mill rate, we take two hundred thousand dollars more. Take that two hundred thousand dollars back out of fund balance to help reduce the mill rate, doesn't that do the same thing?
Yeah, you, you change, you change the article where we'll pull in five hundred thousand, you would change the article that we will pull, we're allowed to pull up to seven hundred thousand. It gives us this exact same thing, I think, um.
No, it doesn't?
Hold on, don't know what we're spending that twenty K.
Yeah.
There is no way that I would put a rebound stuffed into a budget.
There is still a lot of that, it's just that it's being paid for out of the fund balance.
But, but it would be.
When the citizens have the authorized, they can leave it to the select, like, I will probably do it, because that's, that has to be done, but I, I prefer that they know. This is what we're proposing to do, and they authorize, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, if we take article twenty seven now and bump that up to seven hundred thousand dollars, sometime to pay the tax for us to set the mill rate. You're gonna come up with that little formula, you're gonna say, hey, we're gonna take a hundred dollars in and pay for this, a hundred dollars pay for that, voters aren't coming for that.
If you won't have. Still have these two expenses in the budget, which is what I'm complaining about, they're being taken out of the expense list. Still got those items in the budget, so that townspeople know what your money is being spent on.
They do, but they don't know how we're gonna pay for it.
And you can have a warrant article in the budget saying that we want to. We want authorization to pay two hundred thousand dollars and cover that two hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna up. The fund balance transfer for the other year. But it does it correctly, rather than getting into this business of handpicking items to pay the ball out of the general fund. If we wanna pay these two out of the general fund, and this is something good deal, why don't we pay other stuff out of the general? If we wanna pay these two out of the general fund, and this is something good deal, why don't we pay other stuff out of the?
We, we could. We could.
We could, and that's why we're doing, that's why we're doing the, the.
Definitely can be set up that way.
Well.
John, it's municipal, I, I, you know, with all due, and I, you know, I know you look at this hard. With all due respect, this is municipal budgeting. This is the way it's been done for as long as I can remember.
I think I've run on this for at least ten years, but I've never seen this.
Well, I think this is the first time that we've pulled, we've done, like, these two.
For a specific purpose using fund balance.
We always, we always use the fund balance to set the category, but this is the first time that I remember that we had specific article items for certain purchases.
Correct.
But at the same time, if you, you'd have to put the article to raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand dollars for the property value, and then if people voted down, um, I think they're more likely to accept something if they know, they don't have, it's not coming out of their
Right.
Their next tax. I think if they know that we've already ha- had additional funds appropriated.
We already got the money.
The money.
Now we wanna, we want your permission to spend it. The same thing we do with the five hundred thousand. We, we give you folks the option. Because years ago, you used to take three hundred thousand, you just put it in your revenue piece. And, and what we did is we moved it to give you the option up to five hundred thousand to help set the rate. Before, you just had three hundred thousand in there, and we had nothing else. That was it.
Yeah.
So this gives you more flexibility as a, as an elected board to, to set that rate when the time comes.
We also had discussion at the time, we allocated three hundred thousand as to how much money ought to be allocated. Right?
Right, when we.
It wasn't like this was an automatic three hundred thousand. There was, there was discussion to see how much was needed.
Right, when you.
Bring the mill rate down to a range.
Right, when you, right, and a couple of years ago, we went to the, we went to a separate warrant article, providing that authority to the select.
By op two, we changed it op two. It used to be. Bob was the one that said, why don't we, that way it gives us the flexibility to, to change it.
Throw him under the glass.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think the bottom line really, the mill rates won't change, whether we use that or not. I mean, it's.
If a mill rate does change, changes by roughly twenty-five cents.
But then we.
Divide that, because I can take it through this step by step, through the figures, and show you how the mill rate changes.
Right.
Don't tell me.
It, it changes, it changes in the spreadsheet, but then, then when we go to set the mill rate, we pull out a fund balance, and it's, and it's, it's all about the process we're dealing with, rather than sharing.
What we're doing right now in terms of, uh, we're, we're speculating what the tax rate may be. Uh, we're speculating, because we don't know what the overall value is gonna increase. We've taken a stab at it. We've put three and a half percent at it. Um, and then the other variables that we have will be, will be uh the county tax, the education tax, uh, or allocation and municipal spending. Those three criteria, the one that we have control over is this one, obviously.
And obviously, before the mill rate is set, we could have those figures, so that things would be refined.
Correct, right.
Yeah, we, we.
That's correct, yeah. We're taking our best stab at it.
And then you come back to, he comes to us in August, says, here's what we got, and then at that point, we, we decide how much to pull, whether we wanna, whatever we wanna set the mill rate.
But, I'm sorry. No, what I'm thinking is, is it that much different than if we're, if we're saying that we're gonna take this money out of the municipal fund balance, is it that much different than an article that would say, shall the town vote to expend fifty thousand dollars out of the capital reserve account to pay for such and such? Uh, you know, to me, those articles are similar. It's, if we had an article which we have in the past to buy a vehicle, a, a dump truck or something, it won't say to raise and appropriate, it'll say, shall the town vote to expend the sum of whatever from such and such a, a capital reserve account for the purchase of a fire truck or for the purchase. So if we were going to buy a fire truck out of the um, what do you call it?
Capital.
Those, you know, those zones that we have there, the. So if we had an article that said, shall the town vote to expend, you know, fifty thousand dollars from the TIP account to pay for such and such a fire engine, to me, that's almost similar to the same thing that we're doing here. It's not, we, we wouldn't have it in this budget sheet necessarily. If we're gonna take it out of the TIP, or if we're taking it out of a capital reserve account.
Tip, that's not, so you can get that.
But to me, that municipal, I see that municipal reserve account as something similar to our tip, you know?
Chairman, you've lost control of your meeting.
Yeah, if you're not changing the, if you're not changing the uh retirement pieces, the warrant that you have in front of you uh captures all of the uh information that uh would be going to an annual town meeting to be voted upon. So it, it captures, uh, like for instance, Article six would capture uh one hundred and twenty thousand nine forty-two for your general government account. And on my overall budget sheet, shows you how that's broken down. It's one twenty-nine forty-two, so um, if you're prepared, we can vote on these warrant articles, so we can move on, and I can sort of firm up some of this, uh, rest of this.
Just gonna make one more call.
In a way.
If John was to run his spreadsheet like he, like he feels, and then you, it's, I'm not sure how the spreadsheet is, but you show that we're taking a hundred thousand for this, a hundred thousand for that, out of fund balance, and then whatever three seventy-five or, and all that, that mill rate should come out to be exactly the same. If you show that those, those items are, are, are being paid for through the fund balance, that mill rate should be exactly the same. If there's not, then there's something else different. It has to be.
There isn't anything else. Those two items are what causes the difference.
Right.
There's nothing else that's a problem.
So if you take those two items out, so the.
And, you know, I think that's what I gave on the spreadsheet. I took the two items out, bingo, yeah, it's still a penny.
So I understand your point. I, I do, but the bottom line, the mill rate is, is the same, because the voters are gonna.
I don't think you're gonna get this shot.
No, John, John's uh set. He's not gonna be convinced.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, should we just go ahead and start with Article six?
I would think there's to be two of all at once, Article six through.
Yeah.
Twenty-six.
Already like pre.
Sure.
Okay, yeah.
Those amounts.
So you missed, can I just ask your miscellaneous, um, includes your eastern trade on? Social service agencies.
Well, it's uh, includes eastern trails, social security agencies.
Okay.
Um, Kenny Boggs.
Okay.
And the Chamber of Commerce. So if you add those up, they should come to um, forty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars. Should be on line fourteen oh three miscellaneous.
Okay.
There's a couple of items that we wanted to come back and revisit. Have we revisited those? Hers was one of them, and then you know.
Which one?
Hers was one of them.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think we're all set, this particular point.
Um, we've got, I've got two different figures here on this sheet that you gave us with the red and the black. Article nine says civils, uh, seventy thousand four eighty-seven for civil service.
Yeah.
This says sixty thousand.
What date, what date on top of that spreadsheet do you have to the left?
At just the twenty-four, twenty-five, oh, three twenty-eight, okay, yeah.
The, the number should be, um, the number should be seventy thousand four eighty-seven together.
Okay, that's what's up, that's what's on the article.
Correct. What I had to do is I had to adjust the, um, the funding or the contract that we had with Bitterford Dispatch.
Oh, okay.
It went out slightly, so I added that in.
So, he, in my notes here, twelve oh three town hall operations, I had put to revisit. I don't remember why I didn't want to revisit that.
I think it was insurance and. Yeah, I haven't had any changes.
That's what it was. They didn't have the insurance.
Haven't had any changes on it yet at this point.
Came to last night's meeting, we discussed that. The budget item that you don't discuss, that's a much more.
Why? You couldn't hear us?
Yeah, I couldn't hear, couldn't hear, but the only one I could hear is Jason and Keith, maybe.
See, he didn't, he didn't hear me when I threw him under the bus last night, yeah.
So this warrant I gave you, I double-checked all those numbers. The only, I, and there's other things on here that need to be cleaned up, but they're not money articles. They have to do with property taxes. Uh, the due dates, I think, are right, but the uh annual per diem isn't done yet, so I gotta figure that out.
So you're suggesting that right now, as it's written on here, the warrant articles can be voted on right now, Article six through Article twenty-seven? Or not, correct?
Yes.
Then can we do that at least?
Yeah, we can do it. I'm ready to go. Make a motion in a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Article six through Article.
Twenty-seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
We approve. Jason made it. Is there a second?
Second.
Still second to it? All those in favor? All of those? You're a good man.
Yes.
Sacrificial lamb, thank you, John.
So what needs to be adjusted, are you saying?
Uh, no, nothing with money articles. Everything that you.
Right, I know, but going forward, are we voting on the rest of these now, or?
No, you don't have to. The only thing you have to vote on are the money articles. So we, we've done it, done.
Yeah, just kidding. Perfect.
Got my marching orders. Thank you.
Just looking at the dates, you might wanna put the tenth of April.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-five, because I'm on a Friday.
Yeah, those, those are, yeah, those are, those are itch and snow.
This one's good.
See, and I, I need you around from time to time to help me with that stuff. You know that, right? And I, and I don't think the percentage, um, personal property or the, or the real estate percentage numbers are accurate yet either. I think those are last year's numbers.
Oh, the, the rates?
Yeah, eight and a half and four and a half.
That's, that's from the Secretary of the State of the President.
I haven't, I haven't looked at, I was supposed to look today, and I never got to it.
Taking adjournance? Well, so, so we don't need to establish a next meeting?
I don't think so. I think we're good.
Jason?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Do adjournance. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Starts asking more questions.